I didn't pull in like 12 or 13.
All right, no.
It's okay.
All right.
Let's do it.
Try to talk to him, works right now. So what did you say? Yeah, it's like over here. Oh, you're ready. Ready? All right. At six o'clock, the call is meeting in order. It is the June 18th, 2025, Dunes, Dune City, City Council Regular Session. You want your roll call?
Well, we know that Rich is gonna be a few minutes late.
At best. He's got some technical problems at work, I think.
And Susan's online.
Susan's online, okay. Everyone else is here in council. Thank you. Please join me for the presentation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Item four consideration of the agenda. Do we have anything that needs to be changed? Okay. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Jim, Chris, second half. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous. Item five is consideration of the consent agenda. In the backup materials, we have meeting minutes from May 21st and the June 4th City Council meetings. We have bills from the session. Those go from May 10th to June 10th. And then receipts from the same period, May 10th to June 10th. And a profit law statement from May 10th to June 10th. Does anyone want to pull any of those items for discussion? Or come out with a motion to approve consent agenda? You want any motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
One second.
Thank you, Larry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item six, announcements of correspondence. Lada, do you have anything for?
Just that, again, we're doing the ethics class on the 25th at 10:00 a.m. here, if anybody is interested. And you can register through the Oregon Ethics Commission.
So the training starts at 10?
Yes.
And how long will it be?
It's a couple hours, if we can tell you.
Can you send me the link to register?
I can.
Why don't you blind copy the whole council?
Sure.
And me. Thank you. Any other comment or announcement?
Notice that we did have our event on Monday.
Oh, yeah. El Cog.
El Cog vehicle out front here. We did have a couple people that came in and were able to get their services, sign up for services.
And are they gonna come back in July on the third Monday again?
No, not as of now.
Okay. All right, so upon request?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next item, seven A is a mayor report. We had a couple of other things going last Saturday with the O-GART activity. Yeah, so they landed and they actually delivered food. One of our staff was out there. I think one of our residents that's in the audience, I know was there. So they, it was a real operation. They delivered a load of food that went to Oregon Food Share, the Florence office. And the pilot, I think, told Igor that Dune City is one of the only cities, if not the only city, that announces it and participates in any way. You know, most of them, they land and they take off.
Just to clarify, in terms of the smaller cities.
Okay.
Closer cities.
Okay. Small cities. The big cities don't count. Thank you for the clarification. So that was a success. We continue to make some progress on the city municipal water rights and map. And I will send you that link. You know, we showed off the demo stuff. I think we can put the link on our website. Cause there'll be a number of layers on there as they add. You know, we've got stream data, and we've got short-term rental data on the map. And then we'll have water rights for those that have municipal water rights at this point. But we continue to work on the information on who has wells and who has their own water rights, not through the municipal. So we'll populate that, get that information out there for reference. And then there was comment about the kayak ramp at the dam and that it was thought to be the city's to maintain. So Rich and I went out there on Monday afternoon and looked at it. Do we need to pause for a second, Melissa?
I just needed a pen.
Oh, sorry.
To put in, my apologies.
No, no problem. Definitely do. So Rich and I went out and there are a number of polyethylene slides missing on that ramp. And there's some missing hardware. So a couple of the slides are there, but they rotated. And he talked to Dan that does the dam operations. And they have some pieces of plastic. So I think some of that was maintained by the dam operator at some point. And he's willing to give us some of that. So it would be a small purchase to buy some more plastic kind of hardware, put it on. I'll volunteer to cut the strips and match what's there. Susan, did you have a comment? I think, I think you said you thought it was the city's responsibility to maintain?
Yeah.
The city paid to install it. And so the city, since, it belongs to the city since they paid to install it. And I've always been told they're the ones to maintain it.
Okay. And the dam operator was pretty much the same thing. He said, we know it's there. I don't know that I'm supposed to touch it. You, you remember the same thing?
Yeah, we removed, did a reef mountain fragment. There was a big concrete block there. There was real danger when people were moving between.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
All right. And it's, it's a low cost. I mean, we don't need to vote on anything. I just wanted to hear from somebody that they thought it was ours because we'll either get donated or it's low enough cost that Lada can just purchase supplies. It's also eligible for that transient room package. We just kinda got windfall. So it'd be great to show a project that is directly for activities and tours.
Yeah.
So we'll take care of that. Rich and I were coordinating and even making plans. Anyway.
Might be a good idea to put that on our social media for the kayak.
I will. I'm gonna get some pictures.
These local kayakers will love to know that.
Yes. And I know it shows up on that, in the comments on that, that Silk Coos Trail, you know, has a short description. And I got some pictures of it right now. And it doesn't look bad, but you can figure out, you know, what you're looking for, where the missing parts are. But yeah, we'll get some pictures when it's, when it's put back in service and repaired. And it's completely walkable. The walkway is open adjacent, but water's not running over it right now, so. But you can slide on that polyethylene drive. But you can traverse it right now and use the walkway, no problem, from both directions, so.
It is a little rough going down the track.
I wonder. And there's no slides at the bottom end?
Correct.
Yeah, well, when Rich and I were there, yeah, depends where the tide is. The end of it was in about four inches of water. And this time of the year, when we get those negative tides, it'd be a foot and a half drop. And potentially in the mud, because it's only a couple feet deep down there. But anyway, yeah, we're gonna try to maybe schedule something at low tide. Somebody's gotta wait in there and put the nuts on the bottom side while I hold the top side. I already volunteered.
Would somebody else do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, can I ask something?
Yes.
Besides just fixing what's there, there have been a couple kayakers that have made recommendations to me that I'd like to tell you about, probably better with a picture or going out there and showing you, that getting out of the kayak, that they, they would like something there to help them, keep the kayak steady, things like that, that maybe we could put in that would be little helps for the kayakers.
On the upstream side?
Yes.
Rich and I were thinking the same thing. Right now, you're, you'd be trying to climb out of your kayak in two or three feet of water, and there's nothing to hold on to. So yeah, we have the same, the same idea.
There's nothing to hold on to. And, and yes, I've had several complaints on that. But I needed you to say that you would do something. And then I wanted to add these other things that have been talked to me about that hopefully would improve the experience for the kayakers.
Okay. You bet. And let record reflect. At 6:10, Mr. Rich Olson has joined the meeting. I just got done talking about the kayak. So we're gonna go. You got the wet side out there. In your packet, there's a permit report or on the table for the number of building permits. Anybody have any questions? And then the next page, I think, is the same code enforcement report we had at the last meeting for that same period. But we'll now be putting together a code enforcement activity report like monthly or something. So I think you already saw this one two weeks ago. Any questions or comments?
Is it possible to get the detail of the complaints? So we can kinda get a flag or a report?
Yes and no. So I think generically, yes. Specifically, I think we shouldn't, in case any of those end up appealed to council so that we don't get first.
You can de-identify it, just like you mentioned, what's kinda going on.
So, so this was our first. So yeah, we're trying to figure out the best way to do that without input. You know, you're innocent until proven guilty. So we wanna make sure that nobody feels like they've been outed. Well, it's in process, but at the same time, keep you in the loop. We do have a suggestion. We're coming up on a year since the short-term rental revisions went into play. And we've been talking about some fine tuning. And one of those is in the fine category. We talked about fines. And it's still not finished because it pushed us into the nuisance ordinance. Because the fines, some of that, they're not in the short-term rental ordinance. They are citywide. So anyway, there's still some work to be done there. And so we will need a little bit of that information so that you guys can make decisions about what's, you know, what's a major issue, what's a minor issue, you know, how that, how that should be priced, for lack of a better term. Did everyone say something?
Well, I did invite him to the meeting, in case anybody had any questions.
All right. Do you have any specific questions or are too specific?
No.
I do have one. It refers to the total violations in compliance. Is that, are we going back out and checking these complaints?
Oh, yeah.
For correction? Like, what are we doing if they're not? Are they starting the process?
I would think, I got a great example, from a youth example. There was an RV that was broken down in our apartment lot and was here. I wrote him up because I didn't know who it was. Gentleman took a few weeks and he finally fixed it. So now he's in compliance. And he moved the RV.
He was stranded and he ended up parked there. He didn't go any further, so. But yeah, I think, to answer your question, yes, they're getting, you know, it starts out casual.
Yeah.
And then it turns into a written. And then if you don't get any compliance, you know, they turn into a fine.
So there is routine follow-up.
And then if they disagree, oh, yeah.
There is routine follow-up.
All the time, yeah.
Yes.
I saw him cruising by my house, so.
I just want the citizens to know that we are taking it serious. They're not just going out there to waste time and to do nothing about it, so.
No. We've had a lot of contact with the residents, both rentals and non-rentals. You know, RVs. The discussion we had in the nuisance ordinance about how many project cars and if they're in the front yard are visible. So there's been a couple of, you know, you get too many things in the front yard conversations, so. Yeah. You bet. Any other questions or move on?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
What, how are the complaints coming in? Is it like phone calls?
Oh, I mean, they're mostly phone calls, emails.
Okay. And?
Then I think if you look at the report, the formal are those where someone's filled out our form online and filled out all the boxes and submitted. The informal are, you know, a phone call or somebody tells you, you gotta take a look at that. And you don't always have all the information in there.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, the question stems from like this whole complaint and having a compliance officer is kinda new. So like, do people know the resources out there to submit complaints and all that? I'm just curious if they're utilizing the resources that are really available. And have we been asked Igor questions?
Yeah.
Well, the way I see it is, what's happened in the past month or so has been, it's been based on them filling out the form. And the form comes in. It's also been my phone calls and it's been a few people coming here to the office. And they're informal. They've had a chat with me. So what I've done is gone out and checked on things and followed up. But they haven't actually put in a formal complaint. So I told them, if the problem persists, then you have to, you're gonna have to put in a formal complaint.
Okay. And what's the reception? Are they surprised that we have a code enforcement officer?
Actually, it's been pretty good. Actually, a few people stopped me, asked me questions. You know, cause they see the little sticker on the door, on the car door. And I've explained to them, you know, I just recently got hired. Explain what, you know, following, I'm the code enforcer. I work randomly, different days, and I go around it every neighborhood and check on things. So it's been very good, actually. But they, a lot of other people said, they've asked me if I, you know, if I'm building, do I do building permits and all that stuff? I don't get too far into that, I said. But they've asked general questions. You know, like one gentleman down here asked me about, you know, he just recently moved from California. He wanted to fix up his house. And he asked me about being a, does he have to have a permit? Since he's an owner fixing up his own house. He's not getting contracted. So I would say it's pretty good.
Yeah, I would guess right, just general questions, cause you're out in the community.
And I've, and I've also noticed, I think, presence is good by driving around. People are noticing it and, you know, people are doing things, so to speak.
Have any of you, do you, any of you, I know you have. Do you, do you get, as a councilperson, phone calls or text messages from your neighbors? Do you get complaints?
No, they just come over.
Okay. But when you get those, cause I get them. And now I say, I want you to go to the city's website and fill out a form. I mean, cause you're telling me, but it becomes hearsay, right? Because I'm not an employee. And we need to leave the administrative duties to the employees so that if there's an appeal or a citation, whatever it comes to us, that, you know, we're acting as a council and not as, you know, the prosecuting or whatever. So yeah, when I get them, I just say, hey, please, go online. And if you have a picture, you got a video, you got something, you know, fill it all out, give it to the tab. And then staff, you know, let it run its course. Cause some of them say, well, what are you gonna do? You know, can you fix it tonight? And I'm like, no, there's a due process issue here. Because if there's ever an appeal or a citation, I don't want it to be, you know, we didn't follow our own rules or stay in the law. So I just refer them to the website and, or tell them, you can wait until business hours, you know, we have a code enforcement guy call the office, so.
And I should tell you that our phones, actually during the weekends, so starting Thursday night after we close, it comes right to the code enforcement phone. So if he's here in the building, the phone calls go directly to him.
Good.
And he works for random hours, so we have the element of surprise. Holiday weekends.
We're gonna need it.
He was on roadie days.
Gonna need it, the dudes are about to become lively.
Yeah. All right, any other questions before we move on? All right, we have a couple of resolutions tonight. So for the audience, we will have comments on each resolution. And then we will have public comment after that, if there's something not on the agenda. So with that, I will move to the first one. So the first resolution series, 2025 number four. I'm just gonna read this really quick because if you read the title, it's confusing. We didn't just have an election, but every year, the state says that your community has to approve a resolution to opt in to get some of these taxes. So pursuant to ORS 221.760, Dune City declares that it provides the following five services to its citizenry. Fire protection, street construction, maintenance and lighting, storm sewers, planning zoning, subdivision control, and one or more utilities, being our municipal water that we really administer. We're not a public utility. But pursuant to ORS 221.760, the city hereby elects to receive a portion of the cigarette tax revenue, a portion of the liquor tax, and a portion of the gas tax for 2025, 2026. So every year, that's what this election is about. We are electing to receive those tax dollars. You have to opt in every year and send them a notice. And then it will send us some money, so.
So just to make a point obvious, when it says the word election, that is a word that can be used in multiple different ways.
So we are electing to accept.
Yeah, the better word is our choice. We don't have to have an election per se. That's a different.
I think that's a different word, still.
Yeah.
So yeah, we just follow along.
Exactly.
And they mail us money.
Right.
But yeah, we're not, we didn't have anything on ballot in the spring election. So we're not accepting any actual election results.
Right.
I was afraid somebody would come and say, who was on the ballot or what happened?
Right.
We didn't have anything.
Right. Yeah.
Yep. So resolution series 2025, number four. A resolution declaring the city's election and qualifications to receive gas taxes, cigarette taxes, and liquor taxes pursuant to ORS 211.760.
221.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're right. It's 221 on one page. You're right, it's 221. We have a side book in my script, not in the resolution itself. Do any of the councilors have any questions or comments?
I do.
Go ahead.
Question in regards to Section 1 Fire Protection. What are we doing? What is our evidence of that?
We are just a participant in the Siuslaw Fire District. So nothing beyond that. That exists.
That just seems a little.
Right, we don't directly.
We don't have a fire service here. We have our rule.
We have fire service, but it's not Dune City, correct? So we're a participant with Siuslaw.
We do have a fire station.
We do, but it's voluntary too, so.
And it's Siuslaw's. And it's got another sort of equipment. There's a couple of trucks in the most of them. Any other question?
No, sure, thank you.
Do, anything? Rich? Chris? No. Larry? Susan, any questions?
No.
Thank you. If none, I would hear, or sorry, I would entertain a motion to amend the language of resolution series. Oh, sorry, we had no comments. I will now entertain a motion to accept the wording for resolution series 2025 number four and to adopt resolution series 2025 number four.
So moved.
One second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, I have to do a roll call vote. I was reading that, you said. We start at the same.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous. Resolution series 2025 number four is hereby adopted and will become effective June 18th to 2025. And that's all you need for this, right? And you, I'll sign it after we're done and mail it out to the state? Okay. All right, next item, resolution series 2025 number five. This is a resolution amending the annual administrative fee for participants in Dune City's domestic shared water rights. So this affects only those that have gotten building permit and elected to use the city's municipal water rights. I think we have 208 points of diversion and 240 points of use on the list. And then those are the ones the city's required to read meters and report to the state annually. So that's basically our administrative cost. So I won't read this whole thing, but I wanna point out that this fee was established in 2004 and has not been adjusted. And we find ourselves very close to not covering the cost to read the meters and report back. And frankly, I think the city staff time is just free. We're not billing to this necessarily, but we are paying Oregon Water Systems to read the meters. And so to, to continue to perpetuate that water right, we have to read those meters and report monthly and annual report. So, so the proposal is, if you, if you get to the end, the first, Section 1A, base administrative fee is $100. It has been $100 since November 10th, 2004. B, the administrative fee will increase yearly by the Consumer Price Index at the time of invoicing each subsequent year. So we brought this up in the Budget Committee meeting. It's 3% reported last year, so it would become $103 for this next fiscal year, right? Is that correct, in July?
It starts to line first.
If this is approved tonight, the next bill will be 103. The next one will adjust automatically. You won't see this every year. If we approve it as it, it will increase annually. If there's a 1% increase, it'll go 1%. If there's a 4%, and it will be the $103, we'll go up by that amount. So it might be 107 or whatever the actual cost is. And that should, unless the requirements change, as they have a couple of times in the water business, if there's no new requirements, that should keep up with our increased cost of labor for reading meters and submitting, so.
Can I make one note, just the fact that this does say number one, it's point of use and not necessarily point of diversion.
Gotcha. So historically, we were pounding point of diversion. So we had a lot of users that didn't, either they paid a very small piece of the bill or they weren't paying them. And, and we have to track both. So we decided we really need to put point of use because that's what we have to report. We have to extrapolate in some cases to report to the state. So any questions on that before I get into the nuts and bolts? Because you'll be asked if you have any questions in a minute, so. All right. Resolution series 2025 number five. A resolution amending the annual administrative fee for participants in the Dune City shared domestic water right. Do any councilors have any questions or comments about the resolution? Do?
No.
Melissa?
No.
Rich?
No.
Chris?
No.
Larry?
No.
Susan?
No.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to accept the wording for resolution series 2025 number five and to adopt resolution series 2025 number five. So moved. Thank you, Rich.
Sorry.
Thank you, Chris. And I need to do a roll call vote. I'll start with Susan.
Aye.
Thank you. Larry?
Aye.
Chris?
Hi.
Rich?
All right.
Melissa?
Hi.
Do?
Hi.
All right, that is unanimous. Resolution series 2025 number five is hereby adopted and will become effective June eighteenth, twenty twenty five. And will be billed next fiscal filling cycle.
Starting July first.
All right, thank you. And then the next is business license fee. So we've had some discussion about business licenses. We have a whole chapter on business license. The first part talks about, you know, that all businesses, and there are anyone that does any business in Dune City should have a business license. And then there's, there's a section that says, but the only ones that are charged or require a business license, and there's a short category, right? It's licensed contractors, landscapers, and tree services are the only ones that are identified. So after the Budget Committee discussion, this is similar. This was adopted, the fee for business license was adopted July eighth, two thousand and ten. So it's been about fifteen years since it was adjusted. We have the same problem. That's meant to cover things like notice and publishing and some of the administrative duties of the city. Hasn't changed in many years. And remind me, is that eight five dollars right now?
It is currently.
Eight five dollars. So at the Budget Committee, we discussed an increase. And we proposed the increase to one hundred and twenty five dollars. Not add any new categories or classifications, just increase those that are currently have business licenses. So these would be, if this is approved, these would be on their next renewal?
Yes.
I presume. So anybody that's licensed right now, no change when they come in for a renewal or a new business license. New contractor would be one hundred and twenty five dollars. So with that, I will read the script. And if you have any questions or comments, we'll get to it in a second. Resolution series 2025 number six. A resolution adopting an increase to the business license fee pursuant to chapter one twenty of Dune City Code Ordinances and other matters properly relating their where to. Do any councillors have any questions or comments on the proposed resolution? Let's start with Susan.
No.
Thank you. Larry?
No.
Chris?
Nope.
Rich? Melissa?
No.
Do?
No.
All right. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the wording for resolution series 2025 number six and to adopt resolution series 2025 number six. So moved.
So moved.
Thank you. Susan? I need a voice vote. I'll start with you, Susan.
We have two, two moves. Do we have a second? Is one of them a second?
All second.
Susan said.
They both said so.
They both said so moved.
Oh, I'm sorry. And it's to accept the wording and to adopt the resolution. Okay, so we got two seconds. We got two motions and two seconds. Thank you. Just in case. Okay. Now we'll back to Susan for a voice roll call vote. Susan?
Hi.
Thank you. Larry?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Rich?
All right.
Melissa?
Hi.
Do?
Hi.
All right, resolution series 2025 number six is hereby adopted and will become effective June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Now, it's a public comment. Do we have anybody in the audience like a skip?
Well, I have a question.
Please.
Geneva Jackson. And I'd like to know about how the budget is coming. I understand, I, I hear references to the Budget Committee, but when I go online, it looks like that you can check on it. It's not, it's not set in place yet. People aren't working on it. I have gone to Budget Committee meetings before. Are you having in-person meetings?
Yeah, we posted the budget, the schedule. We discussed the Budget Committee at council meeting, set a schedule. We met in, was the first meeting April?
It's the thirtieth.
So we.
I saw that.
Kicked off in April, then we had a budget meeting in May, and.
No, we finished in April.
Okay, it was finished in the April meeting. So the budget training, we had one before that.
Yeah, that was beginning of April.
Okay, so there were two in April. Two meetings in April, and then the Budget Committee finished the end of April. We referred to City Council in May, so it's been approved. And then it will be basically forwarded to the state.
Reading what I was seeing on, online, that it had been approved. I thought there were some questions or something. It said something about listening to the, the discussion. I don't know. So it has been approved.
Yes, ma'am.
And I can get a copy of that if I want to.
Yeah, so it's approved. It will be effective July first. So is it, is it posted on our website as future? Or will that be, do we even post the whole budget on the website?
It is posted because we did notice, so it should be posted.
Oh, got you, because it was part of an agenda, and it wasn't changed. Once we got to City Council and these recommendations for these two fee adjustments came out of Budget Committee discussion.
Off the website.
You should be able to find it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So it was a May, May meeting. Was it the second meeting in May?
Well, that was my understanding. Then I, then I, and then I heard that it was still being worked on.
No, it was approved, it was put in the newspaper.
People that you have on the committee just.
We had the mayor and council and two other citizens.
That's why I thought I saw. The goal is to have seven, isn't it?
Yep. And we had no other volunteers.
And we posted the opportunity.
Yeah, once it's posted, I mean, if no one comes, it's however many volunteers you get.
Yeah.
It was May sixth.
May sixth was the, okay.
The last one that we had where we sent it.
Okay. All right. So, yeah, it was, yeah, it was heard and discussed and approved.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Any other questions?
Geneva Jackson?
Yes.
I, I know that you have spoken on at least, you know, half a dozen occasions about telecommunications problems and the internet and phones in this area and what a problem it is. And I don't know, but I want to know from the rest of you, are you facing that problem? Because we're having crazy problems, even with our phone, which is a landline and usually works very well.
And is that spectrum, your landline?
Uh, yeah, I think it is. Well, right next door to you, I just, are you, I mean, are you people having phone problems? What I'm getting is people are saying they're calling me and they can't hear me when I talk or I can't hear them. And this never used to be a problem. And also computer problems, both my, my son Alex, I don't have a computer, but he does. And my sister Geneva had a lot of computer problems. And is it, do you think because the router was moved? Because I was told there was once a router that was closer to us here. And he said, that are other people having these issues?
I don't think router is the right term. I don't know of anything that was moved.
I don't know, I meant to say communication tower. I'm definitely not.
I don't know of anything.
I don't know much about.
And we have, we have approved the agreement with Hayek to bring a second internet provider to town.
Yeah.
But they have, they're not serving any properties yet. But I think they started over in your neighborhood. They're coming down one on one.
They've been on Fordway for a couple of weeks now.
And they're in Charnar too. They're in Woby too. I know they work on.
Okay.
So I just wondered, are any of you having problems too? Because some of us are.
I had some, but I think they were unrelated. I had the speed of my internet, which is all wireless in my house, was, went from really fast to really, really, really slow. And they sent somebody out to measure, you know, do the diagnostics. And they said, your service to your house is, is steady and great. So I decided it was my ten-year-old router. So I bought a new router and I haven't had any issues. But I also did the Hayek inquiry, you know, you keep getting a pop-up ads. And I said, yeah, tell me what you got. And they replied, nothing in your neighborhood yet. We'll stay in touch. So they're just starting the system. And they will bring high-speed fiber to home if you want really high speed, up to one gig upload-download speeds for seven bucks a month, I think.
And TV has been very sketchy in where they're all kind of combined in one surface.
Yeah.
You know, we're having problems with all of them. And just, we'll be in the middle of like a wonderful movie and we're trying to watch something that just goes.
Yeah.
And also we're getting like a racing picture sometimes. We weren't having these problems before, but I don't think it's just us because I've talked to other people.
Well, the other is, you know, we had the possibility. I didn't see any northern lights a week ago, but that sunspot activity, the Tribes Act wreaks havoc on telecommunications, like satellite and wireless. And so sometimes it's atmospheric disturbance and makes for pretty, pretty sky at night, but it can really wreak havoc with. And I guess the activity was the strongest during the day and it was invisible to us. But it may have, you know, we had a few days there where it was really strong and that may have affected. I don't watch much TV, so I don't.
I know it's that heavy winds and that can affect perception.
Right, we have, literally, we have wires go down and it shakes the antennas too.
So I had the same problem you're talking about about a week and a half ago. And I just simply shut down my modem and router, gave it five minutes to rest, rebooted, and that fixed the problem. So we might try that.
Actually, we did here too.
Yeah.
We just turned everything off.
Well, I wondered, because I live right next door to this building. So I'm like, yeah, I wondered if you're having the same problems we're having.
And we called Spectrum. I think we called Spectrum yesterday and they, they reset us.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, well, yeah, that's good to know that other people are having the same issues and people can get something done about it. That's good to know.
And related to that, that laptop there, we're trying to set it up for the public. So if you want to see the agenda and all the backup material or any of those things on our website and you don't, you don't have to drive all the way to the library if you come during business hours, that will be available as well. And right now, it's just got internet access. But we're going to make sure that it's easy to get to the city's website and, and, you know, all the meeting information and all that that's on our website. So if you want to drop by and use that, you don't have to go to the library if you want to view those things here.
Thank you.
So just repurposing an old laptop because it's perfectly capable of explaining our webpage here. That's about it now. All right, any other comments from the audience? Anyone at all? Okay. Seeing none, I don't think we have any needs for an executive session tonight. For the good of the order, let's start with the person who can't see, Susan.
Nothing tonight, thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Larry? Just one comment. What I noticed is on our city website, when I went to the particular link to Zoom this meeting, it appeared to be grayed out. Susan, did you have that experience this evening?
No, because I had Chris send it to me separately.
Okay, well, what I'm saying is if you just go to the website, it appears to be grayed out. So I would like to suggest that we make it a little more obvious and that it not appear to be grayed out so that our general public people can find that link a little easier. I mean, I'm, I'm very technologically savvy. And it took a meeting ten minutes.
Now, were you on your phone or?
Not a laptop.
Okay, because when I was on my phone and you asked a couple of meetings ago, Chris suggested I went, when I'm on the phone, to go to the laptop or the, you know, the desktop version? Because yeah, it's really hard to navigate on your phone. It's not entirely mobile.
Mode friendly versus desktop.
Yeah. You're saying just changing the bar color here?
Yeah, that's what was this, it just says zoom.us, but that doesn't look like.
Like a hot button?
It doesn't look like, and was it, see how it's grayed out there?
Yeah.
So if we could do something to make it a little more obvious.
Which I'm sure.
Or you can just have a comment somewhere on the page where it says zoom.us, click on that.
Yeah.
It, it almost looks like a title, like, yes, we're going to be zooming. This is what we're going to do. Our platform for the meeting is zoom.us, but what's the link?
Yeah, I did on my phone, so I wasn't sure either. And I didn't know what you were seeing because I was on my phone.
Yeah, and now, now that I've used it several times, it's easier for me to find it. But if you're a first-time visitor to the website, that wouldn't be real obvious, in my opinion. But I don't have anything else.
Good comment. All right, thank you. Chris? All right. Rich?
I don't think so.
All right, need any help with your electricity?
I don't think so.
True driving meter.
You got a pair?
Yes, and I'm going to keep them all. Melissa?
No.
And I don't want to see a nurse tonight either, after this meeting. Do?
Uh, no, just a request, I think. I'm going to be gone next meeting. And just a request not to put anything on the septic or the septic on the agenda.
You know, and I can bring that up in the good of the order. So I looked, you know, I promised you I'd bring something back. And so we got some more info. Lila had been, and I've been doing some research. And, you know, originally, we said, we talked to the state EPA. They said they didn't see any reason why it couldn't do that. Well, there is a reason in state law. It says you have to be a certified, you know, septic operator or licensed contractor that does water waste work. There's a list of people that are eligible. So one of our ideas goes right out the window because it does violate state law.
And it doesn't affect what I have.
No, so the other would be the wording, and, because I agree with you. I pulled out my letter.
Yeah.
I bought a house from a single guy that had, because I have the numbers, you know, it was like three inches of scum and six inches of sludge or vice versa, or three and three something. And then we pay, he paid to pump it, I paid to inspect it, I believe. And then I get the letter and it says, needs to be pumped in five years. I'm like, nonsense, another single guy moved in.
Yeah.
And, and it said three inches, but that's when they started, then they pumped it. And so, yeah, I have the same concern you do. So we're going to talk about that, that we're not following the intent and the letter of our own ordinance. Everybody gets a letter, because it should say, at the most, you should inspect in the next five to seven years. It shouldn't say pump in five years automatically.
The wording, what we agreed on was it was up to the, the property owner and the pumper there. They, they talked and based on usage.
And then you use the chart, exactly.
Based on usage and, and.
I agree. So the chart for me says thirteen because it's a thousand and ten.
Getting started now.
Okay. No, and you're right, because I was going to follow up with you to say, it didn't take me where I thought I was going to go. But, yeah, we can still change some language. So I volunteered to mark that up and then I'll bring it back to council for you guys to review.
Yeah, I'm just going to be gone next meeting and I want to be obvious. So take.
I will put it on next meeting, I promise. But I do have one comment.
I will be ready.
Oregon, Oregon Water Services, who does, who checks our meters for our water.
Yes.
We found out that they do septic inspections.